I want to call to order the June 19, 2012, regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Ms. Milken is not here. Invite you to stand with me if you like. They offer the invocation and then Commissioner Waltrip will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to get together to conduct the city's business. We ask that you give us guidance as we consider those issues before us and lead us in the right direction. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The person we had for the invocation tonight got tied up in court and could not be here. Just as a matter of public record, if anyone from the public would like to volunteer to provide the invocation, we'd be happy to have you. Just feel free to contact me or Ms. Schaller and we'll get you on the list. All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Mr. DeFabo, do we have any awards and recognitions tonight?
Oh, I do not, Mayor.
I think Mr. Blacky is here with our Operation Pride Awards. Invite you up, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner is here to have one award this evening. Our award this evening is a commercial award. It's the Eloise B. Housen Center for Women, 1115 Adams Street. I think everybody knows that that landmark's been here forever. Here's a before photo with the front of the building. And here's a before, here's an after photo of the building. Here's another before photo, a close-up of the building. And another photo, as you can see, the plants and the flowers and the things that they've placed on the building. There's also some stuff around the back and the sides of the building, but I didn't have a before photo, so I didn't show those. But then, this is the actual landscaping that they were recommended for. And this evening, I have Melanie Smith, who is the president of the organization on the board, and Ruth Moyer, who is the treasurer. If they would come up, please, to accept the award.
Thank you, Mr. Blacky. Thank you to the Housen Center for Women. I've been over there many times. They run a lovely facility. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, no other awards or recognitions? Mr. DeFabo, City Manager comments?
Yes. Mayor, there'll be a need for an executive session. There's three issues. Kate will read the reasons, please.
Pursuing to KRS 61810B for discussions on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city. KRS 61810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city. And KRS 61810F, discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee without restricting that employee's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussions of general personnel matters in secret. So moved.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First item is approval of the --
Oh, Mayor, one other item. I would, with your courtesy, I'd like to pull item number 25, number 24 from the agenda. We're still working on it. We've got some last-minute information that we need to factor in, so we ask your courtesy to pull it to the next meeting.
Okay. Number 24 and 25?
Yes, sir. Just 24.
Just 24.
Municipal Order 2012-118.
Got you. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes of the June 5 regular meeting and the June 7 special meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. The first item we have is an opportunity for public comments. If anybody would like to step forward to the microphone to comment on an item that is not on our agenda this evening, this is the time that we provide for you there. Seeing no one stepped forward, we'll continue on. And the first item for consideration is the second reading of Ordinance 2012-16.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 6.09 acres from AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 1791 Old Louisville Road, presently owned by Farmers Investment Company LLC with Wabuck Development Company LLC as contract fundee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Any discussion before opening it up? I believe, I don't see him. Where is he? There he is. I couldn't find him. Come right on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As members of the commission, I'm Chris Davenport, local attorney. I represent, as commission's aware, a number of neighbors on Old Louisville Road. At the last meeting of this body, I think I more or less laid out my client's opposition to the amendment request, probably in more detail than I will tonight, obviously. But suffice to say that my clients had substantial and significant objections to the request, to the zone change request, on both due process and substantive grounds. This body decided at its last meeting that it would not hear from persons who did not speak at the original meeting before the Planning, Zoning Commission. I feel like that was particularly egregious because we had so many people here that have claimed not to have had notice. And that was one of the complaints that my clients specifically made, both before the Planning, Zoning Commission and before this body. Obviously, when you have as much reaction as has been had to this amendment in the last month, that tells me that there were probably a lot of people who had objections that weren't able to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting because of a lack of notice. And certainly, that is a problem, a concern my clients have had for the last six weeks with this ordeal. Secondly, as I outlined to you, there are substantive reasons why this amendment should not have been granted and still should not be granted, still should be denied, particularly those that are grounded in the incompatibility of the zoning request. As I outlined to this body, the planning and zoning staff found numerous policies of the comprehensive plan that were out of compliance. Some of those, in fact, the majority of those, were substantive problems of incompatibility. That is essentially why we have zoning regulation, so that we don't end up with incompatible properties and incompatible uses next to one another. In this case, you've got single-family residential in the area, you've got public park in the area right across the street, you've got a daycare facility. It wasn't that long ago that this city denied a similar request for a zone change amendment atop a hospital hill. And some of the reasons for that was a local daycare proximity, single-family residential in the proximity, and a public park in the proximity. There's no difference with Old Louisville Road. When I was here last, a spokesperson for the applicant mentioned that there's just some old, there's an old trailer park out there. I would submit to you that that trailer park is zoned, single-family residential. And in the eyes of the planning staff or anyone else that's looking at this amendment request, there should be no delineation between single-family residential in one area of the city and single-family residential in another. They are the same. And my neighbors, my clients and those neighbors in that area certainly feel like they haven't been heard. I did my best to speak for them a few weeks ago, to the best that I could. Unfortunately, they weren't able to retain counsel before the planning commission. And that is the, essentially from my perspective, the error that needs to be corrected before this goes on any farther. There are essentially two reasons why you all can deny this. One is on substantive grounds, the other would be on the notice grounds. And as I said to you a few weeks ago, I feel like if you deny the application due to the poor notice, and that was a finding of the staff, by the way, that was a concern, was a lack of notice. If you did that, I think that would send a message to the applicant to do this the right way. Let's have a neighborhood meeting. Let's make sure that the people that are aggrieved by, aggrieved by this decision have a chance to be at the planning commission, and therefore, if it is approved again or recommended for approval, they could speak to this body. I would urge you not to pass this on the second reading, but to deny it on either of those grounds and essentially let my clients and let that neighborhood have its say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Request has been made to reopen the hearing, which means that we would have to start from scratch again. We chose not to do that last time. Is there any feeling that we need to start over with it again? I need a motion if that's the case. Okay, there'll be no motion. Is there any other discussion? Any on the commission? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We'll move on to the next item, which is Ordinance 2012, number 17, second reading.
Ordinance approving appointment to City Board. Ordinance approving the appointment of Steve Snodgrass to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 18.
Ordinance renaming street. Ordinance approving the renaming of a portion of 14th Avenue East to Alumni Avenue.
So moved. Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012-19.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 6 Building Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to revise the composition of the Building Code Board of Appeal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 20.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012-21.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G for general classified, S for protective sworn, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Just for those who might be tuning in at home, those are second readings, so they've been thoroughly discussed at the first reading and no further questions, so we'll continue on. Municipal Order 2012-101.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Clark Arnold to the Bowling Green Warren County Military Liaison Board.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-102.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Brian K. Kozak and Justin E. Sterns to position of firefighter in the fire department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo.
As the commission and the public knows, we have a great deal of turnover in both police and fire department as people reach the age of retirement. We're here tonight to fill two open vacancies for firefighters. We started the process back in 2011. We had 286 applicants.
Beg pardon?
286 applicants. From that, we vetted the process down to 72, passed both the written and the physical fitness test. From that, we selected 30 to interview, and we're still down to a small number that we are using to fill vacancies. Mr. Kozak and Sterns are part of that final distillation and are here tonight, if you still approve them.
I believe they're here, sitting in the second row. Congratulations, gentlemen. I know the next few weeks are going to be trying on you. Just remember, the goal is to finish up. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you very much. Municipal Order 2012-103.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Tigress Al Thulie to the position of Human Resources Specialist in the Human Resources and Risk Management Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo.
Approximately a month ago, Quenna Norris, incumbent in this position, took another job with WKU, and we want to thank her for her service, but we are here tonight to fill that position. I would ask Mike Grubbs to come forward to put his promotional name into nomination.
Good evening. Quenna left in March, and Tigress Thulie has worked in our department since 2009, previously started employment with the city in 1998. She's been filling in for the job and doing a great job, so I'm pleased to recommend her for promotion. In addition to her time with the city, she has a bachelor's degree at Western. Once we fill her, I mean, once we promote her, then we will then look at filling her old position. Any questions?
Any questions or discussion?
Just glad to know her name. First name is Tigress.
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 Does that happen as Tigress?
Is that it?
Okay. Tigress is not here tonight, right?
I don't think so.
No, she had a family obligation tonight.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-104.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Kyle L. Hunt to the position of Assistant City Engineer in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFabo.
With the promotion of Melissa Kanzler to City Engineer, this created a vacancy in the position of Assistant City Engineer. As is our protocol, we took our time in fielding, filling management or sub-management positions. Kyle has performed well, and I would ask Jeff to come forward and put his name into nomination for promotion.
We hired Kyle Hunt April 16th, excuse me, April 17th of '06. Kyle's a Western graduate in the Civil Engineering Program. In that time that he's been employed with us, he's proven himself both technically, his technical abilities, but in addition, his leadership abilities. Kyle's pretty well taken on the majority of the design work that goes on within our department. Kyle also makes routine presentations to community groups, neighborhoods, and this body here. And Kyle's done some study in the management area, trying to gear up for this. Recently, took Del Carnegie course and was voted the highest achievement award by his peers in that course. He's also a member of Team Bowling Green. Additionally, Kyle has filled in in some absences in our department lately, and he has performed very well in that. So we're here to recommend Kyle Hunt's promotion from Civil Engineer II to Assistant City Engineer.
Any discussion?
Officially, Mr. Hunt is here along with his family.
The whole family? And we've put one of them to sleep, I see, already. And it's not Kyle, though. Congratulations. Appreciate you coming this evening. Thanks.
They probably play these meetings at night to keep the child asleep.
Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-105.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Emily M. Angel and Adam E. Smith to the position of Communications Dispatcher Supervisor in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo.
We're always looking for a good leadership throughout the city, especially in the critical area of dispatch. I would ask Chief Douglas Hawkins to come forward to put in a nomination, a name of two individuals for the position of Dispatch Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. DeFabo, Mayor, Commissioners. I am honored to be here before you tonight to bring before you a recommendation of two of our current dispatchers to be promoted to Dispatch Supervisors. One thing I would like to say, and I know that I have been accused of being long-winded a time or two. That is no surprise to any member of the board.
Douglas, go on, please.
I would, I really would like to take a couple of minutes to talk about dispatching as a career first, before I go into some details about Emily Angel and Adam Smith. A couple of y'all have had experience in the police department and will know what I'm talking about. The position of dispatcher generally, and the function of dispatcher, the position itself is difficult to recruit for. It's certainly difficult to hire high-quality people for, and we really make an effort to hire some very, very good people as 911 center dispatchers. And the reason we do that is obvious, that people's lives depend on them. Not only lives of the citizens, but lives of the police officers and firefighters and other emergency service workers that rely on them to deliver us good and timely information. And there is a fair amount of turnover in that position because it's an extremely difficult, it's an extremely stressful position. And so, it's always a success and an accomplishment when we keep good folks in those positions long-term. And tonight, I bring before you the names of two of those folks who have been with us, one a little longer than the other, but both have proven their worth as dispatchers and we believe will prove their worth also as dispatch supervisors. Tonight, I bring before you Adam Smith. Adam has been with us about 10 years, and he's with us tonight, and I know some of his family is here with him as well. Adam comes from a police family. Adam's dad was with the Kentucky State Police for a number of years and continues to be in law enforcement, in a position with a drug task force, a regional drug task force in our area. And so, Adam was brought up around law enforcement to understand what that means, to serve the community, and he has been doing so for a number of years as a dispatcher. Also tonight, Emily Angel, who has been here a few years less than Adam, but has, in the time that she's been with him, been with the Bowling Green Police Department and the 911 Dispatch Center, has demonstrated her skill and ability to the degree that we think she is going to be an excellent and strong supervisor as we move forward. I have talked to Melissa Carter, the manager for the Communication Center, and we both believe in the talents of both Adam and Emily, and we both strongly support the recommendation for their promotion to supervisor. Thank you very much.
Any discussions or questions? They're here this evening. Congratulations. Hard work is well deserved. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
There is one issue that I'd like to bring to the clerk's attention, and that is, at least in the digital copy that we have of Municipal Order 2012-106, it does not list Mr. Smith's name. It only lists --
It's in 105.
It's 105.
Looky there. I was on the wrong number. I could have somebody just point to the agenda for me.
That's an important thing, because when I was hired at the police department, my name wasn't on the municipal order, so I was never officially hired back in 1979, so...
I will keep my comments short on that.
Yeah. If I recall right, Mr. Grubbs sent me a bill when I retired for all my, all the income that I had for that period of time.
Still haven't collected.
Still haven't collected, that's right. All right. Municipal Order 2012-106.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Kristi L. Montgomery to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo.
Mayor, with the promotion to supervisor creates a back vacancy in a position in the same department. We're here tonight to fill one of the vacancies by asking your permission to appoint Kristi Montgomery. Kristi used to work for us from 2003 to 2011 and went to Texas, but has found that some wisdom will come back to our community and would like to work for us again. I'm told she cannot be here tonight.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-107.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of Dan M. Raely to the position of Operations Technician I in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Mr. DeFabo.
As the commission knows and the public is reminded, in our Public Works Department, we have a career path system in which we take people with less experience, train them, and then promote them to a higher level of responsibility. This is the case with Mr. Raely being employed, starting as laborer and moving up through Operation Tech, requiring him to complete a number of trainings and what we call books of training. And so, we feel confident that he's fulfilled all those requirements. Jeff Lashley is here. If you have any question about Mr. Raely?
Any discussion? I don't see down here tonight. Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-108.
Municipal Order approving the Advanced Police Officer Plan, Master Police Officer Plan, Advanced Communications Dispatcher Plan for the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFabo.
A little while ago, Chief Hawkins did a show-and-tell concerning the state's program for career development of its officers. We have our own career development program. Doug has asked that we adopt the state's, but have a period of pendency until July 1, 2012, or any woman before that period. But going forward, we would have the state law enforcement career development program. Doug is here, if you choose, to go over that again.
Any good discussion, questions? Please call the roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.[1651.88]
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-109.
Municipal Order authorizing continuation of an agreement with Park Street Partners, doing business as urgent care and corp care, to provide employee medical services, physicals and medical testing for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
Last year we went out to bid for services involving physicals and medical testing. We had a three-year agreement requiring your approval for every year of that. This is the second year of the agreement. Park Street Partners, under its contract with us, has agreed to hold its price static, so we asked your permission to, again, contract to them for a second year for these services.
Any questions? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-110.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with McCann Associates relating to public safety testing for the Police Department, and authorizing continuation of an agreement with Resource Management Associates for promotional testing services for the Fire Department for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
As we learned earlier, police officers often are promoted, as well as firemen. They go through a pretty detailed promotional procedure, requiring outside contractual help to help us discern who's the best candidate. We bifurcated the process using McCann and Associates for police and Resource Management Associates for fire. We have a three-year agreement, again, renewable on a yearly basis. Again, this is for the same contractual prices last year. We asked your approval.
Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-111.
Municipal Order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials' liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, and physical damage, property, and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
One of the ways we save money, or save the citizens' money, is constantly managing our various insurance programs. At four o'clock, you heard a very precise presentation from Dave Wisebroke about a new initiative, which I thought was well-received. We're here tonight to ask you to approve, again, with the Kentucky League of Cities, our insurance for the coming year that covers liability, public officials' liability, law enforcement liability, automobile and physical damage, and workers' comp. Overall, it's about 1.4% less. Part of that is because Dave and Dave Wisebroke, Michael Grubs, don't let the insurance sit, but manage our risk to extract the greatest savings for the city. So we asked your approval for this. Mike or Dave are both here, if you have any questions.
Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-112.
Municipal Order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Humana relating to managed health care and claims administration services for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
Approximately four years ago, we changed to Humana for our managed health care. Under that agreement at the time, they agreed to hold administrative cost static for a number of years. And as part of the contract, in the fourth year, they were allowed to go up to a 4% increase. We're here tonight to recommend a 3% increase in medical administrative fee for Humana and a 4% dental claim. Mike Grubs, who manages this, is here, if you have any questions.
Any discussion or questions? Please call or roll.
Municipal Order authorizing an agreement, oh, sorry. Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Did I miss you, I'm sorry?
Oh, no.
Next is Municipal Order 2012-113.
Municipal Order authorizing an agreement with Symmetra Life Insurance Company relating to managed health care and specific and aggregate stop-loss excess insurance for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip.
As the commission may know, we are self-insured for health care, and that requires us to manage both our risk and our reward. We mitigate our risk by using what is known as aggregator of stop-loss excess insurance. That is a very volatile type of insurance. It's contingent on the kind of cases you have, where you have a high case. Based on our performance over the past year, we were initially scheduled for a 24% increase because of a particular caseload we had over the past years. Thanks to Mark Morgan, we were able to reduce that down to a 13% increase. Mike is here, if you would like to get more detail about why.
Any questions? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-114.
Municipal Order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials' errors and omissions, buildings and property, and business automobile for the Convention Center Corporation for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash.
In addition to the city using the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Program, the Convention Center, which you are the Board of Governors of that building and corporation, also received its insurance from KLC. We're due for an increase this year, going from $41,004 to $42,006. Although it's up because of our performance there, it's still less than it was in 2010. We find this a modest increase and well worth the service we receive. Michael is here, if you have any questions.
Any discussion?
No.
This is the last of a series of ministerial decisions that we have tonight regarding getting ready for the next fiscal year or so. I'm sorry about that. No, that's fine, we got to get them all done for the first fiscal year.
Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-115.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-39 for planning and zoning roof project from Gunter Construction Roofing of Scottsville, Kentucky, in the amount of $56,730.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash.
Both the city and county are owners of the building, that planning and zoning, and a number of other collateral agencies use. That building, like any other building, needs repair from time to time. We, with the help of Bruce and others, have weaved a three-way partnership with the county and the planning and zoning to repair, replace the roof on the building. We had two bidders. Gunter Construction was the low bidder. We essentially have already received the planning and zoning's contribution via reduced budget of $25,000. The county and the city will split the $56,730. We chose to put it through our bidding process because of our capacity to do so. It's important to realize that there'll probably be some additional work on the parapets and walls of the building, but for now, this covers the roof. Jeff Lashley is here, if you have any questions, as well as Mr. Hunter.
Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Hunter, did you have something to add?
Mr. DeFebo hit on that. The $25,000 was a 5% reduction in our appropriation request. We made the same reduction for the county, so we're actually contributing, it's actually $24,230 for each government, so we're putting in about $49,000 towards that project. Our hope is, the next year appropriation, we would keep it at the same level to, again, push another $49,000 into what would be Phase 2, which would be painting the three exterior walls that are non-brick. They need to be painted and some light brickwork, and the preliminary estimate on that's about $19,000. So if that holds true the two years, the Planning Commission will basically have paid for the whole project. But it was important that one of the governments manage the construction for us, we're novices at this type of construction, and obviously it would help that someone could pay the bills and we could kind of reimburse both the city and the county for the work. But hopefully after two years, we would have put in $100,000 to the project, and it'd actually be some savings for the city and the county in appropriation, hopefully next year. But the building is in dire need of some work. The block is, we have severe water dam, this only fixed the roof and the outside. There's a lot of damage on the inside, just through years and years of water, I guess, leaking down through the block. So I'm open to any suggestions other than fixing it, but I think we got to fix it, so...
Any other discussion?
Appreciate your help on that. Sir?
Appreciate your all's help on that.
Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-116.
Municipal Order authorizing software subscription services from Enroute Emergency Systems in the amount of $117,103.89 for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
The city operates a 911 center for the greater region. At the epicenter of that operation is the software that drives the communication system. That requires a software maintenance agreement to make sure that software works and so that people can communicate during time of emergency. We're experiencing a 2.8% increase in the software. It's also important to note that in this year's budget, Doug has asked for conversion of new software, so as you can see from Lynn's memo, we will extract the savings as we bid the new digital software in the coming year. Lynn is here, as well as Doug, if you have any questions.
Any questions? None, please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-117.
Municipal Order authorizing maintenance services for radio and communications equipment through non-competitive negotiations with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $39,228.84 for fiscal year 2013.
Motion by Nash.
Second.
Second by Hill.
At the, in addition to the software, we also have radios in which both police officers and firefighters communicate, and we use Motorola to make sure those pieces of equipment are operating on a day-to-day basis. That requires an agreement. They're asking for a 3% increase, which seems reasonable to us, and so we recommend your approval. Melissa Carter or Doug are here, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? Discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
And we've pulled a 24, so we go to Municipal Order 2012-119.
Municipal Order approving a substantial amendment to the annual action plan for year six of the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
As the commission knows, we're trying to do some creative improvements at the Parker Bennett Center. We've used reprogrammed CBG money, we were a little short, so we're reprogramming some of the unspent money to finish out the project. Brent is here, if you have any questions about the need for the addition of $24,000, but it's to finish the project that we asked your approval four months ago. And we had a public hearing last time. Went through the rather deliberate process.
Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-120.
Municipal Order approving a contract with Community Action of Southern Kentucky Incorporated for transportation services for fiscal year 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. Febo.
One of the quiet jewels of this community is our bus service that we run and operate for people who don't have automobile transportation or find a liking to taking the bus. We had a bid, and the bidder that received the bid was the Community Action of Southern Kentucky, requires your approval from year to year. Cheryl Allen's here, and I think it might be appropriate or apropos for her to make some brief comments about how well the bus system is doing this year and what more she could do for the community in the coming year with this money. Cheryl? Ms. Allen, please come forward.
I didn't tell her I was going to do this.
I know you did. I could tell by the look on her face.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I figured, you know, you've been around the block, you can wing it, right?
Let me see what I can pull out. Well, certainly I can share that the bus system, GoBG, continues to increase on ridership. The last few years, on the routes, our increase last year was 20% over the year before, just seven the year before, as you know, that was the beginning of the downturn, and then 22 before that, and all double digits other than that. And then our ADA service, which is the paratransit service, has also had double-digit increases the last few years. This year through May, our ridership was about $115,000, so we're looking to have another 17%, 18% increase this year. You may have noticed a lot of activity down the street on the corner of 11th and Center, and with some RRA funding and some other capital funds, a couple of years ago, we were able to purchase that with the city and for a light maintenance facility. And we're still able to rent out two of the front units there, so that will provide some incidental revenue to help support the transit operation in the future. But we'll be able to hopefully have some staff down there to be able to sell passes and help people learn more about the system, as well as do some very light maintenance in the facility to help keep our buses out of the public works garage any more than we have to, because when a bus is down, you can't roll and you can't run on time, and we have a very good on-time service. And once we're able to complete that, all the money we have has got to be spent by the end of June, so the only things we're waiting on down there now is our signage and solar lighting. So you may have seen the new awnings go up this week. So that's all the money we have for now, but we've applied for more, because we had to pull out some of the big things we wanted to do on this go-around because of roof problems. But we're excited about it, and once we're able to move down there, the biggest news is, we expect to be able to have some of the routes, probably two of the routes, start and stop from down here, so they won't have to all, we have five routes, and four of the five currently go down to the Beauty Avenue to start and stop and transfer. And especially the green line that runs out Scottsville Road can really struggle. And so we're able to take, we're planning to take that route and one other route from going down to Beauty, and so we're real excited about being able to do some route realignment, so stay tuned on that. I don't mind saying that, you know, with the federal funds that we have right now, we're also looking at some cutbacks to the Saturday Shuttle and the Go-To-Work Shuttle, the first route in the morning. But we are appreciative of the city's funding, and we continue to look at more revenues and the way to operate most efficiently. Do you have any particular questions that I didn't answer?
Cheryl, the federal funding is dependent...
Pardon?
The federal funding is dependent on the amount that the city contributes as well. It's a joint project.
Well, there is match requirements for the capital, which has an 80-10-10, and right now we have no capital money for next year. The planning money, which is $15,000, has an 80-20, I believe, but the operating is a 50-50 match, and so, but the operating has been about, I think about a $300,000 cut so far for next year that we're looking at.
And we match that not only with funds, but within any kind of services and fuel too.
Any discussion or questions? Good job, Ellen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. Febo?
No.
Please call or roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-121.
Municipal Order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated fiscal year 2013 operating budget and financial statements ending June 30, 2011.
So moved. Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash, Mr. Febo.
Since we issued the first General Obligation Bonds, part of the agreement we had with the Transpark, or the ITA, was to have a yearly presentation of their budget and financial statement to you all. Tonight, Dave Alexander is here to make that presentation on behalf of the ITA.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo, commissioners. In the packet, we did present the February fiscal year 2013 budget and the 2011 audit. Both have been reviewed already by the ITA Board, and so we're bringing it together for your review and approval. I'd like to note a couple of things about it. We have finished, the Bowling Green Area Economic Development Authority has built their third speculative building in the Transpark. It is complete, we're showing it to tenants now, and as you know, the EDA is a private organization that's investing money to try and support economic development in the Transpark and the community. In the budget due to increased jobs, wage assessment revenue increased by 12% last year. We're projecting an additional 5% increase for next year. And also, as part of the General Obligation Bonds that Mr. Febo mentioned, we did agree that we would hold the operating expenses of the ITA below $450,000. The budget this year is approximately $410,000, and that's also below last year's budget even. So we feel we've done a good job with that, holding that expense down. The budget does anticipate payments by the ITA to the city and the county combined of approximately $2.1 million to be used towards pay down on the bond next year, and that is primarily from the sale of land. The state has contacted us, preliminary discussions on acquiring land for the connector road between I-65 and the Transpark. So that's where most of that money is coming from. So, that's where most of that money is coming from, land sales and any other tenants that we're able to bring in there. After that payment, that would leave $381,000 of cash available to the ITA to use for future development, over and above the operating number. It would be used for future development, and obviously, that's a number of mutual concern to both the city, county, and the ITA, because we can't grow jobs if we don't have product, and we can't build and develop product if we don't have cash. So, the commitment and cooperation of the public entities, the city and the county, and private entities such as the Chamber and the Economic Development Authority have really been generating some impressive results for South Central Kentucky, and I wanted to point out just a few of those for you. Thanks to the foresight of many others, Lot 6 out of the Trans Park has been designated as a CSX select site, one of only five in their 23-state region, the only one in Kentucky. Warren County was identified as Kentucky's number-one county for private sector job growth from 2001 through 2010, ranked number three in the nation for job creation and projects in 2011 by Site Selection Magazine, five in the nation for business and careers by Forbes Magazine, a couple others here I'll skip. February, Warren County received one of the three first designations in the state of Kentucky as a work-ready community. So, good progress there. And just announced, there was the Kentucky Silver Shovel Award for Economic Development Excellence, and South Central Kentucky had three of Kentucky's top 10 projects in 2011. And I have a handout on that, that, who do I leave that with? So, based on that, economic activity is increasing. We feel we've been generating some very good results, but we definitely intend to turn some of our leads and activity we've been having into some sales in the Trans Park this year. Any other?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there any?
Questions or anything?
Questions or comments for Mr. Anderson?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
We appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
No further discussion, please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-122.
Municipal order amending procedures relating to annual funding of nonprofit entities receiving city appropriations and approving appropriations for various city-created contract agencies for fiscal year 2013.
Salute. Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
As part of the budget process, we outline various contributions, various commitments we make to what are called contract agencies. We have both a budget that controls that process as well as a policy. This particular municipal order reorientates that policy and brings it up to date with many of the changes that the commission has made over the last four or five years. Most notably was the elimination of what was called competitive agencies or contributory agencies. Also in this budget, also in this document, is the budget for the coming year, in which you have already made decisions about during the budget hearing. This is just a summation of those actions by the commission.
We've got some people here in the audience that would like to speak, is that true? Invite you to come, please identify yourself and who you're with.
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, Tom Tomlinson, with SkyPAC representing, however, today, the Capitol Theater. As you probably know, we take over operation of the Capitol Theater on July 1st in an effort to keep its lights on and its activity burning bright over the next year as we make some determinations exactly how we'll be able to use it in the coming years and what kind of restoration and work we can do on it. This action was taken relatively recently, and our ability to continue to do so is highly dependent on raised money as well as contributions from organizations such as yourselves, so we have asked you to consider, to continue to fund the Capitol Theater for another year while we make this transition into operation as part of the SkyPAC operation.
Thank you, sir. We received several emails about the event, is there anyone else that need to?
I believe you've heard from a number of us, and there are a number of us in the room.
Ask a question.
Sure.
Mr. Tomlinson, were you aware that the city had basically placed the Capitol on a phase-out project?
I was aware of that, I was made aware of that recently. I was not aware of that when we took over, when we made the decision to take over its operation.
Did anybody on your board aware of that?
I can't answer that. We have 22 members of the board, I haven't interviewed all of them.
If you were to receive money from the city, what would that money go for?
Primarily for daily operating costs, heat, lights, electricity, the maintenance kind of activities. We have already incorporated the staff into our budget process, so it's really just keeping the lights on, making it available for the community at highly competitive rates so that we can keep it operating during this next year as we continue to fold it into our operation and then bring it up to standards that hopefully will make it much more energy-efficient and effective to operate than it is today.
Was it, based upon your understanding, the intent of SkyPAC always the intent to absorb the Capitol Arts Center and the operations there?
I should probably refer to Mr. McQ for that question. I certainly was aware that, we were certainly aware that at some point, we would be taking, there was some intent that we would take over operation of the Capitol as part of our entire operation, but it wasn't until last April or May that we began discussions with the Capitol Theater Board and actually reached an agreement on this past end of summer.
No further questions, thank you.
Questions, discussion? Is anyone else? Mr. Baron?
Mike Baron, 408 East Main Street. Periods of transition are always difficult, and Mr. Tomlinson, he's being modest when he doesn't talk about past successes in doing this in other communities. I'm sure in deliberating on how much to ask for, it wasn't just a whim. He's been successful in doing this all over the country, and, you know, we have ongoing performances, we have operations ongoing, just planning for future modifications, all that needs to happen, and if you consider what's, what our theater means, this community, especially the youth, I don't know if you were able to see Les Misérables, that was performed earlier this year. It was a wonderful performance by the talented youth of Bowling Green, and you would have sworn they were, I would have sworn they were like junior college level of performance, just amazing. And that's what we have here in Bowling Green, and that's what things like the Capitol Arts Theater promotes and allows to happen. And I think it's just so important that this community support the arts. We've done a great job of it in the past. I know there was a phase-out, but I'm just, we're just asking that this be extended for one year so that Mr. Tomlinson and the combined board can do their due diligence on how to make Capitol Arts a part of this community for the next decade, or two, or three, or four. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Part of the response in the email that I sent to those board members that contacted me included information that the public may not, well, I'm sure are aware of, but may not remember, we, since the economic downturn, we've, we've taken a pretty good hit in our, in our revenue sources, and as part of that, we set aside a lot of projects and maintenance items for the city itself, and in fact, I think it's been three years since we've actually purchased any new police cars, if I recall correctly. And in that downturn, we've, in essence, asked the agencies that we have supported in the past to, to phase them out to stand on their, on their own, and the ones that we have over the last five years since the recession started includes the Chamber Orchestra, the International Festival, Western Symphony Orchestra, the Friends of Evelyn and Depau, New Era Planning Association, Primetime Events, VSA, VSA Arts of Kentucky, and the biggest of all was the Fairview Community Healthcare Center, which was receiving an appropriation of $200,000. And we've, we've, and I'm not sure this is the right phrase, but tried to transition people off of agency funding from the city, because we have some core responsibilities that we need to take care of, and our, and our revenue has actually begun to stabilize, and that doesn't say that we won't be able to help in the future, but I'm afraid right now, it's, it's really difficult for us to maintain our core responsibilities and still be able to do other items, and I, and I hope you don't think it's that we're, we're not supportive of the downtown or the arts or so forth. Over the last several years, we've put in over $5 million to develop Circus Square Park, although some of that was grant funding that, oh, and DRA was one of them, DRA helped obtain those grants at that time, over a million and a half to acquire property and the land exchange for SkyPAC to move downtown. The city continues to provide $1.6 million a year to support the baseball park, the bonds that the city issued for that, and we recently stepped up to the plate to backstop some bonds to bring some more, to keep some jobs from leaving town, but to bring some high-quality, high-pay, high-tech jobs into the downtown area, which will continue to keep that thriving. So, I hope you don't think that we're, we are doing anything other than trying to be responsible with our friends at this moment. Again, times change, and, and we may be able to consider things in the future, but for this year, it's going to be rather difficult. Is there anyone else? Any comments? Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And the next item on the agenda is, is an opportunity we hope that will help SkyPAC obtain some grant funding. Municipal order 2012-123.
Municipal order recognizing and designating Southern Kentucky Performing Arts Foundation Incorporated as the City of Bowling Green's local arts agency.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. This is a request from Mr. Tomlinson that follows up with what Warren County did as designating SkyPAC as the local arts agency, which my understanding makes you available for perhaps more grant funding.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, now it's my turn to help you. The most agencies, most cities and governments, counties and cities have designated local arts agencies. The federal government recognizes designated local arts agencies as agencies that are available to receive or apply for funding from a variety of federal agencies, as well as a number of corporations who only fund, or foundations who only fund designated local arts agencies. So, we are asking that SkyPAC be identified as the City of Bowling Green's local arts agency, which means that funds that we would receive for those kinds of purposes would be used for cultural activities throughout the city, not within our four walls, but throughout the city, which could include the Capitol, but throughout the city as well. So, this is of service to the city and a way for you to refer questions that you get about cultural activities in the city to us, so it takes a little load off of you as well.
I misunderstand, you said it's for opportunities outside of SkyPAC?
Well, we can certainly use this, for instance, to use potential funds for educational activities that would bring young people into SkyPAC, but it's not to support the SkyPAC operation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2012-22.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebo.
This is our fourth budget amendment of the year, and I would defer to Jeff, CFO, Chief Financial Officer, to handle any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Maslow? Thank you, please call a roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the last item on the agenda, we have a closed session coming up, we'll recess for about five minutes to allow the room to clear, and for you guys from insight, I'll let you know after the first item whether or not you need to stick around beyond that. Thank you.